Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Valdosta. On Monday, August the 23rd. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Do a roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Councilmember Flynn?
Here.
Councilmember Fowler?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Snow?
Here.
All present. Thank you. We come now to citizen input. If you wish to speak to council, you'll have three minutes to do so. And since we're doing it by Zoom, if you hold up your hand using the toolbar on the Zoom application. You have Linda? Yep, anybody else? We have one so far. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask Linda Lloyd to address council, please.
Okay, I would like to strongly urge council to move the septic ordinance forward. We desperately need to protect our current and future residents from fraudulent contractors and ensure that we don't have hundreds of septic failures in the future. I continue to be in touch with the Arkansas Contractors Licensing Board and the Arkansas Real Estate Commission to also assist us. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Any, anyone else wish to speak to council? We'll move on to council reply. Does anybody wish to reply to Ms. Lloyd? Okay, seeing none?
I had my hand up. You can't see me, maybe?
No, I can't see your hand, Jerry.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
God, I just, I just sent Doug a, an email of a couple of messages off of social media regarding a lady that has a, got a serious septic issue. And according to her, the, the contract indicated that, that she was on sewer rather than a septic system. And of course, it appears like her septic system is failed or in serious problems.
Okay.
I don't know if she's been in touch with Doug or not.
Mr. Tapp, have you heard from her at all?
No, sir, I sure haven't.
Okay. Alrighty, if you'd have a peek out at them, Mr. Tapp, it's probably in your inbox. Thank you, Jerry, for that. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of July 26th regular meeting, please.
Move to be approved.
Larry?
I have a, I have a couple of questions before we get that far, if I may.
Okay.
Under old business, the first item is ordinance 222021-22. And in the last paragraph, or in the last, second from the last line, it starts out reading, period, motion by, and there's no vote recorded for that first motion. It didn't say it was unanimous. It was five to zero. It was four to three. There was no vote recorded for that. The second item that I have a question about is in the next paragraph, ordinance 21-23. About halfway down, the line starts with Wozniak, period. And then it goes on, roll call vote was unanimous. Mr. Flynn made a motion to amend the ordinance by adding the emergency clause to the ordinance. And then it goes down third from the bottom line. Motion to adopt emergency clauses repeated. I don't know if there were two actions taken. Or if there's clarification that needs to be done with that. It, it, I just have, have a question about for clarification, so.
Once the motion has been approved, then the emergency clause needs to be approved.
Well.
What was added earlier, it still has to be voted on and approved.
Well, but, okay, so.
That's why you see it in there twice.
Yeah, so the motion by Flynn was not seconded then? Is that what happened? Or it didn't get voted on at that time? Because there's two motions to adopt the emergency clause.
Well.
And, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm confusing the, the reference that's made in here, Wayne. And I apologize for that.
Okay, well, I'll look it over and make sure that it's correct.
Okay, yeah.
We, 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 we can't, the minutes can't be changed once they're approved. So if there's going to be, needs to be modifications to it, then that's going to have to be approved. We can't, we can't change them once the council approves them. So I guess my suggestion would be if we think there needs to be some, some fixes to this, I'm, one of the, I don't have a copy of the minutes in front of me, but if there was a, a vote recorded that, that the result is not in the minutes, that's definitely a problem. So you can table consideration of the minutes until next month and just do, do, do two sets of minutes if, if, I mean, this needs to be fixed.
Yeah, I would suggest that was, that's what we'll do and then I'll go back and double check it.
Okay, so Mayor, you need to, someone's going to have to make a motion to table consideration of minutes until next month.
I made a mo, I made a motion to approve, so I need to rescind my motion.
Okay, well, if there, okay, if there was a second, then that would need to be.
It hadn't been second. Okay, it had not been second at all.
Okay, alright, so Mr. Snow is withdrawing his motion. So Mayor, it would be in order if somebody wanted to move consider, move consideration of a motion to table consideration of the minutes until next month.
Thank you for the motion from Mr. Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Flynn, any further discussion?
Well, the only further discussion I have is if we're tabling it, I think we should also, doesn't have to be, it could be after the vote, I guess, but we need to hear from Mr. Williams what his second problem was. So we make sure Wayne looks at all of them.
He actually, he actually mentioned two, John. He mentioned the first one where there's no vote numbers recorded, which is, that's the first ordinance. And the second ordinance, over the emergency clause.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Alrighty, anybody else? Okay, Wayne? Okay, so this is a vote on tabling two minutes. Until the next meeting. Until the next meeting. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Burke? Burke?
Yes, sorry.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Here, it's six zero. Okay, we'll move on to the monthly financial reports that Kim sent out. We're still having a good year and our cash on hand is eleven and a half million. So we're at the 50% mark where we only have to be at the 25% mark. So we're still very healthy. I don't think Kim made it on the phone. She's traveling back from Dells. Alrighty.
I had a question, Peter, about when you sent out the email about there being an $800,000 impact because of the census percentage that Bellevista has of the county. Was that 800,000? Is, does that start in 2021?
It starts in 2022.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't clear which year it would be applicable to. So it'd be applicable starting in 2022.
Yes, and Kim and I, Kim and I have been working on, excuse me, mitigating that number. She's been working with the county assessor to understand what homes, what new homes will be on the, on the property role next year for that tax. She's also been working with the county comptroller to understand what she's going to be projecting as an increase for their sales tax next year. And then we've also been looking at the ambulance revenue. It's by the end of June was sitting at 195,000 over where we were last year. And I believe that is because we have outsourced it, we've cleaned it up. And so we're going to watch that as well. That too will help mitigate and get it down. I'd like to get it down to 100,000. So I just want to assure council that we just haven't thrown the number in the air and said, oh, well, we are working hard to mitigate it down.
I would like to mention on 2022 also, we'll have the fee, which we didn't have before. And it is for specific purposes, but still, it's a source of revenue.
Yes, it won't be that large for the first year. But it certainly is, you know, going forward for future capital projects, it's something we need to keep into consideration.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Not exactly understand, why are we having an $800,000 reduction?
Because other cities grew faster than we did in the census. So we currently are getting 11.98% of the county sales and use tax. We increased since the last census by 13 and a half percent. However, there were other cities that increased at a faster rate. And therefore, they will get a larger apportionment and we will slip. So we will slip back to 10.59.
So which city, Centerton being one, and what other cities?
Centerton, Bentonville, Jonesville, great deal.
Okay.
Cave Springs had a huge percentage increase. It's not a large increase in population compared to, say, ourselves. So you have to be careful when you look at the percentages. You have to look at the actual numbers that they jump on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, welcome. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolution on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Flynn. Is that what you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Here, it's six zero. Thank you, new business. We have four ordinances that are out first. The first is an ordinance amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-39230, county parcel number 16-25207-000 from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. This is the first reading. Taylor is with us this evening, as is Derek. Both Mr. Burke and myself attended the, the planning commission and there were no objections to this, as I recall, in fact, to all three. But this one in particular, it, it does meet the, the criteria for the 2040 land use plan, and it also conforms to the surrounding current uses. Would that be correct, Taylor? Or Derek, whoever handled that one?
I'm you. That one would be Derek's. The first one, number A would be Derek's.
Okay.
This, this is in compliance with the future land use map. It, it fits quite well with the current zoning plan based on the lot layout existing blocks around it. And then we had comments in the report about how it fits in line with the comp plan as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions at all?
I don't, I don't have any questions, just a statement. So, you know, I, I went out and drove by every, you know, each one of them individually and checked them out. And I, I just want to say upfront, because I won't say anything after this, but I don't have any issues with any of the three. So on, unless there's someone else that has something to say, I'm going to move to suspend the rules and move to third and final on this one.
Well, I thought, I thought what I might do, Doug, is I'll, I'll go for the first reading for each of them. And then I was speaking to Mr. Kelly. Jason, can I still say motion to suspend the rules and move agenda items A, B, C, the third and final?
Mayor, you, you need, you don't need to go through the items and then go back. So you, I mean, Mr. Fowler's made a valid motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final on this one. He could make a motion to go to third and final on multiple items if he wanted to, like items A, B, and C, if he wanted to do that, he could. And then, but you, you need to, we don't need to go through items A, B, and C, and then suspend the rules and then go back to item A, for example. You know, we don't, we don't do it that way. That's not how we do it.
Okay, Larry?
I have some issues with item B if we were proposing to.
Mayor, there's a, there's a pending motion and a, and a, a second on the suspension.
Did you get a second? I didn't hear a second. Okay, we didn't hear a second, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Larry, you're seconding?
I did, yes.
Okay, is there any, is there any further discussion? Item A? Okay.
So the question, the motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading on item A.
On item A. Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Here, it's six zero. Okay, I'll read agenda item A for third and final. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-39230, county parcel number 16-25207-000 from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. That was third and final reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a moment, a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Fowler. Any last minute comments? Wayne? Okay, roll call vote. To adapt. Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Here, it's six zero. Okay, the second ordinance, ordinance B, or item number B, is amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-39231, county parcel number 16-37723-000 from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. That's the first reading.
I have some questions. Are we going to get a presentation for, by the, one of the planners or?
Okay, Taylor is this yours? Ms. Derek's?
I can present whatever it is that, yeah, Mayor, would you like for me to give a brief overview of this one?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is a rezone request that is sitting along either side of Highlands Boulevard, the east side and the west side, where Highlands intersects with Queensberry. And then also south of that location where Highlands intersects with Hatchet Hollow Road. And it includes lands on either side of Hatchet Hollow at that intersection. Cumulative acreage of the, of these pieces of land adds up to just over nine and a quarter acres of land. It's surrounded by either low density residential or other P1 lands around it. These are documented as reserved properties within the plat of Queensberry subdivision, blocks one through eight. When staff looked at the land use semester street plan map, there was plenty of access via a major, the major arterial and the lesser road Hatchet Hollow. Regarding zoning standards, there was no lack of compliance there on minimum lot sizes or dimensions on either of the geometries mentioned. And then in regards to the comp plan, this is an area of the comp plan where the designer of the map showed it as a common area. However, as we all know at this time, common areas are totally different from reserve tracks. These are actually reserve tracks and given the overall context of this area, staff is really not seeing any problematic reason to, to, to not rec, to not have recommended approval of this.
Hey, Mr. Williams?
My question, because the parcel, the third parcel here, in which I don't know if that's number 71, 72, or 73, but anyway, it's a 6.6 acre parcel, has Hatchet Hollow Road shown on the platted documents that were submitted for our review. But it doesn't identify it as a county road, number one, and it doesn't identify what a right of way requirement would be for that as a county road. I went on the county website on the GIS map and I did not see a designation by the county as a county road, but I'm assuming that's, it's a county road. So the question is, there's no provision for the existing alignment there being preserved or somehow it would not be a part of the 6.6 acres for development because it would come out of there. And roughly, roughly what that does is it reduces the, reduces the acreage from 6.6 down about eight tenths of an acre, if you assume a 50-foot right of way and about 730 feet of length of Hatchet Hollow going up through that triangle. So I'm wondering what, what, if anything, the county, we've contacted the county on this issue and whether they have any, any problems with the rezoning or without setting aside or designating. The plat did not take into consideration the road right of way as a county road when they did the plat. I don't know the circumstances in the county at that time. I know some things in the county have been done to clarify and resurrect definitions for county roads that were here to for unidentified and undesignedated. So I'm wondering, have we contacted the county about this issue? Do they have a position? Do they have a concern? Are there any issues that we need to address before we approve this?
Mr. Lynn?
The part of this rezone request that city really would be concerned with is the part, I mean, anywhere we're doing a rezone request, it's within our city limits, right? And so road that was once a county road is now a, a city street. And it, I agree, that's a great observation that it was not shown on the original plat. It wasn't platted out at that time. However, because development is not associated with the rezone, it, staff's mind is that this would, you know, any kind of requirements of road right of way, that would come about through a development application in the future. And we don't typically consider was enough street dedicated in the past with a rezone request.
Mr. Williams?
I, I, I guess I'm disappointed that we didn't address it with the county to know if there were any issues about it, since it wasn't designated on the plat or no preservation of a road right of way has been shown on the plat. I don't know, I'm, I'm not inclined to act on approval of this, waiving the third reading tonight because of those issues outstanding, so.
Mr. Lynn?
I would just respond with I, the county, it's just, I don't, I'm not clear on what business they would have with this section of Hatchet. I mean, it would be our street department that might have a concern with it, but maybe let this, maybe let the city attorney speak to this a little bit more, but any street that's within this property, that's within our city limits is, now it'd be within our jurisdiction, not the county.
That's correct. I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not quite sure what the, two things. One is if, if, traffic can be a consideration in zoning, so in, in general, so, but, but if we're talking about traffic from the unincorporated part of the county into the city on that road, I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, what the I, I guess I'm like Mr. Lynn, I'm not quite sure what information from the county is being requested, but I, I, you can, obviously, I'm just here to address legalities. You can ask whomever whatever you desire to consider, as long as you're within your, you know, the things you can consider. And certainly, traffic is, is one of those things. But as Mr. Lynn said, this isn't a question of development at this point, this is use. And so, you know, there aren't going to be development answers or street dedications or any of that stuff in a zoning.
I, I guess my concern is it doesn't show any, either easement rights or reservations for a public street that's in here. And that public street is really a county one, not the city one, even though it's in our, in our boundary line.
Well, we, we don't, we don't, we wouldn't do that in a zoning. We, we dedication, it would only come up in a, in a, in a subdivision or a plat or a, a development, large scale development, whatever can happen to come forward. So, but county, when, when, what, when the city, when a piece of, when an area becomes part of the city limits, any county road that's in that area becomes a city street. It's not still a county road if it's in the city. It's a city street because it's public right of way. So no, nothing, nothing would have to happen to make that occur. So we're talking about an area in the city limits, it is a city street. It is no longer a county road.
Anything further, Mr. Williams?
I'm, I'm still confused, but I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with it.
You can always vote no.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I want to make a motion. We suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Do I have a second? Second. Wozniak seconds. Mr. Fowler made the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, Wayne, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Here, it's five one. Okay. This is the third and final reading of amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-39231, county parcel number 16-37723-000 from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. That was third and final. Any further discussion?
Question, I, I really don't understand Mr. Williams, Councilmember Williams, his, his objection.
Well, it sounds as if he's concerned that the road is a county road, but it's within the city and that there are no easements showing on the plat.
That's correct. And there's no provision.
It is a city street. And Mr. Kelly addressed the, the situation with the easements and whatnot. This is used as opposed to someone coming in with a subdivision.
But city streets are planted if they're shown as a city street.
Well, not, not unless, if they're prescriptive streets, they wouldn't necessarily be planted, but if it was surveyed, the, the street would be shown. But I, I'm in a zoning matter, I, I mean, you're, you're looking at the, the parcel that's been before you recommended for rezoning. It's everything in that parcel. And if it comes time to develop that parcel, obviously, these matters are going to be very critical about the location of any public right of way. But I, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with any example where right, I, I mean, unless, unless Mr. Williams is saying that the parcel is drawn incorrectly on the map and that, that what is described is not what is depicted. I mean, that we could potentially be an issue, but I, I think we're talking about what's, what's located within the area that has been described, but I'm, I'm a lawyer, I'm not a surveyor or an engineer, so I, I'm going to have to defer to people that get into those technical matters.
I think, I think based upon the configuration of the parcel, it's a triangle with a street running generally north and south through the middle of it.
I beg the question of the, its suitability, and whether it can be developed as a residential parcel. Now, perhaps as a single lot, it might. More than that, it might not, so that's subjective. I guess the fact that it's, we're rezoning the roadway as well as the property is the, is the other side of the question. So we'll let it go, move ahead.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second from Mr. Snow. Any last comments?
Wayne, okay. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Kerry, five-one.
Thank you, the next ordinance is amending this Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-twenty-one dash three-nine-two-two-nine, county parcel number sixteen-dash one-nine-nine-five-two-dash-zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to R-one Single Family Residential. This is the first reading, does anybody need an overview of the property? Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to move to third and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Fowler made the motion, and Mr. Williams, second.
That's a motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading.
Right. Okay, roll call vote on that, Councilmember Wozniak.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
Did you say me? I'm sorry.
Lynn. Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Correct, carried six zero.
Okay, third and final reading, amending Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-twenty-one dash three-nine-two-two-nine, county parcel number sixteen-dash-one-nine-nine-five-two-dash-zero-zero-one from P-one Conservation District to R-one Single Family Residential. That was third and final reading, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Wozniak, and the second by Mr. Williams.
Okay, roll call vote again, Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Last ordinance of the evening, item D is adopting local standards for sewage disposal systems, regulating minimum septic requirements, requiring notification to owners of septic system design and approval limits, providing definitions, providing penalties for violation, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes, this is the first reading, discussion. Mr. Williams?
Uh, I guess there are a couple of items in that proposed ordinance that have been debated by staff and others. And I submitted at the last minute tonight, only because I had some issues with my computer. If, if Eric or John could put up the document that I emailed, it will show the issues that are there, I don't know if you can do that.
Mr. Kelly, is this, is this, um?
Uh, I, I just saw that I have an email. I have not reviewed any of these proposed amendments, so I don't know. Uh, I mean, I know, uh, and, and these amendments are to a prior draft, which was not the draft that's currently on first reading in your packet. Uh, so I would uh, there, there's that, and so we've got amendments to a prior, to the, to the rough draft, and so I, I think what I would ask is, obviously, the council can take whatever action it deems fit, but we've got three readings in three months on this. And so possibly, if you want to certainly discuss, if Mr. Williams wants to discuss what he intends to offer in terms of amendment, why, that might be helpful, but on the technical side of this, I, I just, I've got to make sure this is correct, and, and I've got it, I've just got it, and so and plus, it's to a prior draft, and so, I mean, I, I, I would just say that I would ask you not to take any action on this amendment, because I just, I don't know. Uh, I would just, and looking at it, um.
I can put it up there if you'd like, yeah.
I, I would just, there's a proposal to, to change that first sentence to the definition of bedroom. Uh, that, that sentence is directly out of the state regulations, I, and it was, and I put it in there like that on purpose. The, the change to sub-paragraph number seven to that is something we know we need to change, uh, because that was, that's something that we noted amongst the, the group that was working on it, about that needing to say bedroom rather than just room. Uh.
Can you scroll down a little more?
The um, and so I, I just, I, I can't, I can't read and advise on this on the fly, I don't, I'm not going to do that. So I'm just going to ask that perhaps you delay consideration of this, um, but you can take whatever action you see fit, of course, so.
So the recommendation there for council is, this is the first reading, we still have two more readings, so we've got two months where we can consider further amendments and tweaks, such as the one that has been sent out this evening by Mr. Williams. Uh, if that meets with your approval, then we'll move on to the next item. And, uh, Mr. Williams, if you want to have a meeting to talk about this, please ensure that you run that request through, um, Mr. Jertson, so that he can advise the press if there's going to be a special meeting.
Uh, if I may, uh, Mayor, uh, could we back up to the first change? Can we just briefly go through this, and I'll explain what the quick rationale is? Uh, on the first line there, it says bedroom. The question really is the term intended, um, and, and you could say uh, if, 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 if the city were to look at the room and say, well, it's in, it meets these criteria, so it's intended to be uh, used for sleeping quarters. Uh, I think that's a debatable thing, so the suggestion was to use a more finite term of the word suitable rather than intended, it makes it, to me, less arbitrary. Then if you move on to the next change, uh, and there's a screw-up there, um, and it is, I, at line six, uh, it says, has access to a bathroom without going through another room. The room there at the end of that sentence should be bedroom, not room. Um, what we're saying is that you can't go through another bedroom to go to a bathroom if you're considering the room specifically as a, as a bedroom. And then if we move on to the next one, this merely clarifies the, the strikeout at the end there, regardless of tank size. In the draft that was originally presented, there were provisions in there to adjust the tank size based on the designations by the Planning Review Section of the city. That's not incorporated, so I think that the strikeout is a redundant statement, but I do believe that it requires clarification in the first two lines that are highlighted in red to make sure that our, that we're following the ADH rules as amended and setting minimums, and if we move down to the last part, um, the this is effective after adoption, but it would apply also to the issuance of occupancy approvals after adoption, so we would be picking up some, some parcels with the tag on the electrical panel that says how many bedrooms that the property is, is approved for on the septic. And the, and if you move down to the last one, John or Eric, uh, in order to make this more viable administratively, it would be on the first day of the month after adapt, after adoption, so we could set that to a date specific if we know when we're going to adopt it, and I think the resolution that you adopted last month on the impact rules had a particular date in mind. Uh, this would leave it generic, um, but it would still be effective, I think. So that it starts on the beginning of a month for record-keeping purposes, it would be much easier for our, our city staff. That's all.
Okay, rather than debate the changes at this point, is everybody satisfied that we still have enough time to tweak this? And if you'd like to have a special meeting to chat about it, you can do so, Mr. Burke.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and I just, I just wanted to offer by way of comment that, and this is not to be critical towards any of the suggestions that Councilmember Williams brings forward tonight. Uh, but I spoke about this a little bit last week, and I, I really, uh, think we can do better for the citizens of Belavista if we kind of follow our own process as much as possible, and I, I appreciate from time to time there may be a need to expedite something. Uh, but I think our process really is to work through these kinds of details at the work sessions, and we had our work session a week ago, uh, tonight. And so, uh, it's the same thing now, two regular sessions in a row, I walk in at six-thirty, and there's new information before us. I think that's, that makes it tough for us as a city council to, to all find our common ground and get on the same page. So I'd like to ask that all of us on council, uh, commit to our process as much as possible, honor that process, because that process is due diligence, it's the right way to do it. Uh, work through some of those details, and then the regular session is left for some debate around those details, not for tweaking, not for, uh, significant modifications, so that's kind of my two cents worth, uh, for the second week in a row.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke, anyone else? Okay, let's just leave it at first reading, and with more work to be done. Okay, moving into resolutions. The first is a resolution, excuse me, amending resolution number R-two-zero-two-one-dash-three-five, to clarify that two signatures are only required on bank checks and not on bank deposits. This is a housekeeping item that we talked about at the work session, where our previous resolution had said that there were two signatures required on both city checks and on bank deposits, but that is not the case. And we went to our best, so this is amending R-twenty-twenty-one-dash-thirty-five to show what really has to occur, which is two signatures on city checks, but not on bank deposits. So it's a little bit of housekeeping that has to be, that we're doing here. Are there any questions at all? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Wozniak, second by Mr. Williams.
All right, roll call vote, excuse me. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Thank you, the next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Emergency Vehicle Specialist, EBS, pursuant to an HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of ten self-contained breathing apparatuses in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-six cents for use by the fire department. If you remember, at the work session, Chief Sims took you through the age of this, of this equipment, and the need to start moving it out and getting more modern. If I remember, Chief, you mentioned that it's, it's even difficult to get parts for these older ones.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Uh, the chief is, is sitting with us this evening, if you have any questions for him. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to, yes, Mr. Williams?
I'd like to thank the chief for, uh, his initiative in pursuing this uh, replacement and upgrade of our equipment, I think it's something that's new and overdue. Uh, and we found, uh, at least, uh, some means of particularly covering part of the cost in the future.
Correct, thank you, anyone else? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Wozniak, second by Mr. Williams.
Okay. Roll call vote, Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Thank you, the next resolution is authorizing the sale of a surplus city vehicle currently in use by the street department in public auction pursuant to Belavista City Code, section two-dash-three-four-five. In your package is a memorandum from Superintendent Button. Uh, this is a two thousand and seven Chevy Silverado pickup with a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on it. Um, it's seen its days, as there's a public auction coming up, and he would like to put it out, uh, for the auction. Is there any discussion at all? Seeing none, I entertain a motion, yes, Mr. Williams?
I guess one, one side comment is police vehicles, uh, uh, street department vehicles, utility vehicles in general, the mileage is grossly misleading, when you say it's got, what, a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, I think, was reported on this one. It's probably equivalent because, because of idling time uh, to be at least twice that in reality, in terms of its wear and tear, so just as a sidebar for anyone who's, uh, any of the public that's listening, uh, they may say, well, it's a low-mileage truck, but in reality, it probably is about twice that.
They are workhorses, you're right. Anybody else? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Mr. Wozniak, Mr. Williams, thank you.
All right, roll call again, Councilmember Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Thank you, the last resolution of the evening is approving the Belavista Advertising and Promotion Commission, uh, Commission's reapportment of Jane Low as an at-large commissioner, and Tom Jensen as a Tourism Industry Commissioner for four-year terms. Is there any discussion at all? Mr. Flynn?
I, I just had a question, uh, you know, I've heard this term quoted as three years and four years, so I just wanted to make sure. And I didn't, uh, notice this until tonight, or I would have researched ahead of time, I'm, I'm not, I want to make sure we have the right length of term.
I, I, when we initially appointed, uh, commissioners, there was a staggered uh, flow, and so some served three, some serve four, some serve two, if I'm not mistaken. My understanding is that these two positions are, are going to get reappointed for four years, all terms are supposed to be four years now, so there wouldn't be any less than that in a reappointment.
Well, I know there was, to your point, like, the, the very beginning, which I've been there since the beginning, there was a one-year reappointment, a two, a three, and a four. So, and I'd just like to say to, uh, Tom and Jane, yeah, you know, they're uh, both obviously very knowledgeable, Belavista really involved, uh, appreciate their opinions on everything, you know, they're, they're seasoned, uh, in their judgment. So I really just appreciate them holding their hands up and, uh, willing to, to carry on with the commission. We've really come a long way, and they've been a big part of it.
Okay, anybody else?
I agree with that.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler. And Mr. Flynn.
Okay. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Monday, September the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, at five-thirty in the evening by Zoom meeting, the next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, the twenty-seventh of September. the twenty seventh of September of two thousand, twenty twenty one at six thirty PM by Zoom. The planning commission work session will be September the second, twenty twenty one at four thirty by Zoom. The planning commission regular meeting will be September thirteenth at four thirty PM by Zoom. Board of Zoning Adjustment will be September the twenty first, twenty twenty one at five thirty by Zoom if, if required. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be September the fourteenth, twenty twenty one by Zoom meeting if required. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Anybody have any last thoughts? Larry?
Uh, I would respectfully request, uh, Mr. Judson to set up a meeting on Thursday or Friday this week, if he would uh, to discuss the, uh, ordinance on the septic system. Um, uh, but to speak with, uh, Director Tapp to make sure it's not conflicting with his schedule. So if he could talk with, uh, Mr. Tapp and get some times that are suitable and then send out a, a notice or an invite, uh, to see when we can set the meeting up, but Thursday or Friday anytime.
So you want to meet with Tom Judson?
No, no, no.
I think he meant Jertson.
I'm talking about our city clerk.
Okay, all right.
I assume that's what you were, but you did say Mr. Judson, so that's fine.
I apologize.
Of, of course, a, a meeting with just Larry and Doug Tapp would not have to be public notice. I mean, you
Yeah, you can talk
You wanted to have more than one council member there and have a
Well, I guess if, if more than one is interested, it would certainly make it easy that way. I don't know if there's more than one that would be interested in, in addressing any of the issues that are being contemplated or not.
Okay, so if anybody else is, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right, it's all right. I could check with Doug and see about a time and then, and send it to all the council.
Yeah, if anyone's interested, then, then we're covered.
I do have a question. So Larry's proposed changes, does, does there have to be a motion to amend the ordinance as originally presented, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, stay hydrated. It's going to be a hot week. And we have another clinic at Allen's on Wednesday afternoon between two and five for Pfizer, which will be, uh, once again run by Chief Sims and his operation. Thank you for attending this evening. Good night.
Thank you.
Take care.